Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, November 22nd. And if all would rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as we look this morning at our agenda, are there any adjustments to today's agenda? Any adjustments?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. There's a motion to approve. Is there support?
All support.
Thank you, Commissioners Svolson. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would like to point out to members of the public that our county administrator, James Yorkey, is on the phone with us today. Welcome, James.
Hello, everyone.
All right. At this point, we're going to move into our public comment period. This is an opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board. Are there any citizens to speak today? Has anyone received public comment? Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I've received none.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll move on then with our consent agenda items. And is there any item a commissioner would like to pull this morning?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
All right. Commissioner Starley, we have a support from you. So, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're going to move on down to Soil and Water Conservation District. And we have a report today, our AIS Annual Report, which is going to be provided by Amanda Wieberg with the support and help of Elena Hansel.
Amanda, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. You can speak loudly. I'm going to put you up by the microphone. You're up.
(mimicking a child's babbling)
She is a sick child at home, so we're improvising.
Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning, Commissioner Sullivan, Madam Chair. I apologize if you hear a child in the background.
No problem.
Everyone's okay.
Okay. So, I am here to just present the 2022 snapshot of accomplishments for the Cook County Aquatic Invasive Species Prevention Program. The document is provided, so I'm just going to read through it and then have questions afterwards, so this is informational only. So, the first page is just the metrics, the numbers, for you to see the amount of money that was spent this year, the amount of people doing the work. There's me, a part-time staff. There were three watercraft inspectors, and 43% of the total money spent this year was used on staff wages. There were 18 volunteers, which were mostly Lake Association members doing volunteer monitoring for finding water fleas and rusty crayfish. Our partnerships include the 16 lake associations in the county. We went to all five of the schools in the county and 30 businesses, including all of the outfitters and resorts, and the local government units, which are the Forest Service, the DNR, and I'm blanking on the other two. And we have a county AIS program advisory committee that meets every other month. We distributed $10,772 in grants. One of them was towards the crayfish, northeast invasive crayfish study. And then others were to lake associations. Had 17 events held about aquatic species. They were at Fisherman's Picnic and other community events, and then at Lake Association meetings. That's the next is how many residents and visitors were connected about AIS during these outreach events. All, there's 275 children that were taught about invasive species during school visits. And they, there was a pledge that was signed by 168 people to say that they would clean drain dry. And the amount of money spent on advertisements, and the section about watercraft inspections. Law enforcement was not able to participate this year in watercraft inspections due to their staff shortages. And then 10 water bodies were monitored for zooplankton toes without any new infestations The second page goes over the spending summary, the categories, the amount, and a little bit of a description, and then the pie chart, just as a visual of the table. And then we can move on to the success stories for 2022. The Caribou Lake Association continued trapping for rusty crayfish and harvested 2,889 crayfish. They took very adequate details of their harvesting. Last year, in 2021, they harvested 1,091 rusty crayfish after the crayfish were found and confirmed in Caribou Lake in 2020. So, this is going to be a continuing project that they keep coming to try to lessen the impact of the rusty crayfish. My document closed out on the computer, so I need people to reload.
Amanda, can I ask you a question in the meanwhile?
Amanda, Commissioner Mills has a question for you, and I can read the next page if you need to.
Okay. I have it up now, and I'm ready for a question.
Thank you.
Thank you. As far as the Caribou Lake was concerned, has there been a change in their trapping efforts or techniques to get that increased and harvested, or is it because of the population, do you think?
I think I heard most of that.
The question was why they have more that they've trapped in 2022 compared to 2021. Was it techniques? Was it location? Are you aware why that might be?
That's a great question, Commissioner Mills. The rusty crayfish have spread into other locations of the lake over the last year because the DNR Fisheries Team did a lake survey on Caribou Lake, so they knew that the rusties were further. So, the Lake Association members sampled in other areas of the lake and were able to harvest more than they did in 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next page is, talks about the grant that was given to Northern Waters crayfish. They are their own LLC. They receive funds for their pilot project to harvest the invasive crayfish at Pike Lake and then sell the crayfish to restaurants, the Indian trout, and Fisherman's Daughter. They went to the farmers market, the Thursday Night Farmers Market, and then they hosted free rusty crayfish balloons at festivals. So, this was a great opportunity to convert invasive species into a regional economy that supports local food production and environmental resiliency. Their efforts have reduced the impacts of rusty crayfish on ecology of the lake while capitalizing on the deliciousness of fresh wild mini lobsters.
There's laughter in the room, Amanda.
And big smiles.
Everybody liked these pictures. Some multi-county collaborations. We have the Bowery Waters sign that the commissioner has approved to be placed. That was a partnership with Lake County and St. Louis Counties. These are going to be placed at all the Bowery Waters entry points within our three counties. Then we hosted the fifth Cook County Take a Kid Fishing Day at Kimball Lake. That was a partnership between the Forest Service, the DNR, the Soil and Water Minnesota Extension, and Sea Grant. We're excited that we may have had it back, will continue to have that event.
Amanda, could you make sure next year you don't invite the black flies?
I'll do my best.
Thank you. Commissioners Svolson and I remember those black flies quite well.
They were intense.
And the next two pages are data. And this is the watercraft inspection, hours by lake access. It has all the lakes that the watercraft inspectors were stationed at, the hours they were stationed at in June, July, August, and September, the total hours that inspectors were staffed at those landings over the summer. And then the last column is how many inspections were performed at those landings. The bottom table is a summary of all that information from the last seven years. So, you can see the number of hours that inspectors worked over that time, the number of inspections that were completed, with the number of staff, in parentheses, inspections per hour, percent that were motorboat, percent that were canoe, the amount of compliance, which means that they had their boat plug pulled and they didn't have any weeds or mud or contaminated water in their watercraft. We spoke with inspector within the last 30 days, and that's important just to see how frequently people are getting in contact with learning about the AIS prevention techniques on a landing. Percent out of, and out of water for five days or more. We like it when they're out of water for five days or more, so that anything that's on their boats will not survive that time on the water. And then the last page is the data from Northern Waters crayfish grant, the dates that they sampled, that they pulled all of their trap lines, the weight, the pound of crayfish that were harvested at each date, their average size, the water temperature, and the average depth of the traps. So, the traps that they did, there are 10 crayfish traps attached to a line, and that was one location. And then they usually did 10 locations each day, each time. So, there's 100 traps that were pulled each time of these dates. And the second bottom map is just the locations of the traps, where they were when they went throughout the lake to find that crayfish. And that was the majority of the accomplishments for the AIS program in 2022.
People looking and shaking heads.
Thank you so much, Amanda. We really appreciate all the information, and I just want to thank you and your team for all the really good work that you're doing. And I'm particularly impressed with the education that's going on, not only in our schools with our young people, but also all the billboards and the different ways you communicate with the larger public. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions or comments for Amanda? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Amanda. And just to be clear, there was no rusty crayfish harvesting on Pike Lake before 2022? Is that correct?
The question was, there was no rusty crayfish harvesting prior to 2022, correct? Question mark?
For this pilot project, there were not. Wait, that's not right.
No. They, yeah.
The two that were, Yusuf and Garrett, were on the project. They were harvesting last year, 2021, for their owner, personal consumption, and that's how they decided. They wanted to see if they could pursue this at a deeper level and make this a sustainable fisheries harvest.
And so, clearly, the scope and scale has increased for 2022, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just really curious. I'm fascinated by the harvest, the daily harvests, and the fluctuation there. And then, of course, the season total is pretty incredible. So, I'm just curious for next year how that'll look.
Any other questions or comments for Amanda? Well, thank you very much, Amanda, and we appreciate the fact that you tried to communicate with us and under very difficult circumstances, but we are able to get the information, and thank you so much for all your good work.
Thank you, Commissioners Sullivan.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good day. Hope you're all better soon. All right. Well, that completes item number four. We'll move on to item five, land services. And we have Neva and Tim with us this morning. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. So, last Wednesday, the Planning Commission reviewed a rezon request that was submitted by Mark Birdelson to rezon two outlots out on Tate Lake from FAR1 to the FAR2 zone districts. Basically, the plating and the development of the properties around that area in earlier years did involve a rezon when those plats were put in. And for whatever reason, the outlots were omitted from those rezones. So, the FAR1 is kind of the original underlying zone district. It's a 20-acre, you know, minimum lot size and allows dog kennels as a permitted use. So, this rezon seemed really efficient and natural for the area to bring that into similar use and density. So, there was no written public comments. I received a lot of phone calls with questions, but nobody felt a need to provide comments in writing or in person, and it was unanimously supported and recommended for approval.
All right. Any questions for Neva? Commissioner Mills?
Just a brief one. So, FAR2 would then be a minimum of 10 acres, correct?
Correct.
Versus the 20 acres?
Yep.
And, okay.
And the LSR zoning would remain. So, there already is that Lakeshore Residential zoning in the first 300 feet from Tate Lake. So, that wouldn't change at all. It's just the interior part of the zoning of those outlots.
Thank you.
And I can say from attending the meeting and all the information, it really fits with the neighborhood, if you will, that's there. So, I think it's a really good move. Other questions, comments? Not yet. Entertain a motion.
So, move, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And on to the vacation rental ordinance. Good morning, Mr. Nelson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and I'm quite certain this is the pinnacle of the day for everybody.
Indeed.
It's about the 10th time that I've visited with the board about this particular issue this year. We actually started this process of updating and amending and taking a look at the program back in April. We've had a couple committee processes that have gone on, culminating with the public hearing that took place last Wednesday. And interestingly enough, that that public hearing was a little bit anticlimactic because we actually had zero comments that had been submitted from the public, either in writing prior to the hearing or during the hearing. And so, there was absolutely zero comments. I'm quite certain that there is a diversity of thought still about the ordinance and the program, but we had, you know, going back to that even initial survey that had been sent out with the 580 responses. So, there is quite a divergence of opinions with regards to vacation rentals going forward, but we did have a pretty robust process, and we had a pretty diverse committee that had gone through everything. And these are the recommendations that had come on. I will point out that, you know, in each of the documents that you have, from the report and the report to the Planning Commission and such, that it is understood that this is just a point in time, that this is not the end of the process, that we do expect the vacation rental industry itself to be dynamic and changing, and its impact on the community. And we will keep continuing to revisit it as necessary. There are a lot of recommendations that have come out of the committee that aren't specifically ordinance-related, that are policy-related. And so, as we go forward, we're still going to be working with the board here in dealing with some of those particular issues. This step right here is just codifying into ordinance, and we have to get this in place by the end of the year because our current ordinance sunsets at the end of next month. And so, we do have to get this in place. I will point out, too, that there are even some of the recommendations that are recommended to be in ordinance form that we didn't really have time to make those adjustments for, namely, the distinction between those vacation rentals that are vacation rental homes from those vacation rentals that are resort-based vacation rentals. And there is, there are different issues that really are encountered by each of those different types of operations. And so, you can look towards early next year. We do have a little smaller committee. We're working on getting the definitions and different provisions drafted up specifically for the resort-based vacation rentals. So, that will be progressing on into next year as well. But as I indicated, we had zero comments coming in from the public going into the public hearing. There was some discussion on the Planning Commission side. One of the questions was about the septic, since we, as the county, will be taking the responsibility for the septic program. Up until this point, we had had the state kind of run their requirements on vacation rentals, and they were taking certificates of compliance that had even, you know, dated back to the 90s, just as long as they had an existing certificate of compliance. Well, those run out over a certain number of years, and so, we're adding the component in about having to, all operations needing to have a current certificate of compliance. So, we do anticipate more inspections having to come through and getting those in. And the question from the Planning Commission is, you know, what kind of standards are there going to be tighter standards than we have for, say, if somebody comes in for a land use permit or so? And we're going to be using the same standards that are the statewide standards through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for the septic systems and their upgrades. And so, that's just a clarification on that point. We're not going to inundate the current level of contractors that are out there. I know that was a concern, that it's just all of a sudden going to overwhelm the system. And so, we have to kind of pace all of that out to get everybody upgraded over a certain period of time that needs to be. And in the end, it was, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of the language as has been discussed. There was one member of the Planning Commission, though, that did dissent, but that was more in terms of a general dissent, that she didn't feel that we needed to regulate vacation rentals at all, that she didn't see the need, that it really benefited the community, and, you know, everybody else kind of felt otherwise. And I would agree that even just the septic system component alone, if we did not adopt this part, this ordinance, we would not be getting upgrades on some of these operations because the other triggers that are out there are land use permits and other triggers that they wouldn't necessarily hit. And so, by virtue of having this, you know, the whole reason why we do have ordinances is to protect the health, safety, and welfare, and certainly upgrades specifically even on the shoreline areas, which the vast majority of the operations are in the shoreline areas, certainly goes a long way to protect the surface waters. As has been indicated by our Lakeshore Septic Compliance Program in each of the lakes that we have done that and have subsequently done lake water monitoring, there's been a marked improvement in the water quality on those lakes where the systems have all been upgraded on. So, I guess I will just turn it back to you, Madam Chair, and answer any questions.
I know that there have been hours and hours of work put forward by the committee. I know Commissioner Starley chaired that committee. Any remarks you'd like to share with us or with the public?
Thank you. Well, I think we did quite a nice job in reviewing everything and looking it all over. I do have some comments for Tim because I think numbers keep changing. So, when we would adopt the ordinance, it stated in this report that we had 180 rentals. What do we have today, about?
If, I mean, it's 200, and right now, the number of actual licenses is 290.
Okay.
And so, that, I will just go on elaborate a little bit. If you're going towards what the trigger, there was a lot of discussion in terms of, well, how many is too many? And we just have to set a cap and a limit. And in order to set a specific overall limit, it's a little bit more complex and nuanced because in some areas, and again, dealing with the distinction between resort-based vacation rentals and those that are vacation rental homes, it was a bit more of a complex issue than just saying, okay, we're going to put a hard number cap, and then nobody gets it, any additional ones. Even places that have hard caps, like the city of Duluth, they're distinguished between areas of the city and such. And so, it would be kind of the same here. In some areas, it may be more acceptable to have a higher amount of it than other particular areas. So, what the committee decided was more to recommend a trigger for discussion. So, they put in two triggers, basically, one being that of numbers and the estimate out there between our current service provider, web-based service provider, and as was kind of backed up by the assessor who did their own assessment and inventory of what they feel to be the current number of operations out there, about 358 actual operations. So, you have 290 now that are specifically licensed, and then the rest have to come into licensing. And they decided to add 10% onto that top number to say, if we hit that number in terms of licensing, then it'll initiate that discussion again. But understanding that we still do need to, you know, we don't want to have that discussion so far out that we aren't necessarily hitting that number again, but we want to have the discussion. So, they actually also added in January of 2024 for another point of that discussion with the caps and triggers. And by that point, we'll have a much better number as well in terms of the number of licenses that are out there.
That's an important point, I think, that we have some type of overview as to how many are actually being licensed. So, that was an important point. many are actually being licensed. So that was an important point. I also appreciate the fact that Land Services is now taking over the septic inspection with the guidelines of what the Public Health did along the way. Also, going to another part of the ordinance, the area now that you feel perhaps would need another person in the office to cover some of the things that are going to happen with, with the rental permits going up to 400 now a year, then how do you feel about somebody handling extra stuff? Do you need to have an extra person?
Okay, that's a very good question, Commissioner Storley and Madam Chair. The, that part of this discussion is going to take place after this point. See, so we're turning, this is just the ordinance part. There are other points of the recommendations. That is one of them. There was a lot of concern out there that, you know, if you look through the existing ordinance the way that it was, there's a lot of provisions that are in there that do cover a lot of the concerns, but it wasn't getting really enforced as much as it should be. And so there are two recommendations that kind of go hand in hand, and one of which is increasing the fee of the license fee from the $200 to $400. And then the other recommendation is to add staffing resources to be able to accommodate all of the enforcement and administration. And that, that is, I'm working with personnel right now in the drafting and realignment of positions within the department. And next, was it December 13th? There's a fee hearing that will be talking about the licensing fee. This one's a little bit more focused on just the ordinance. But yes, that is a very good point. And we certainly are going to be having that discussion as we move forward with regards to staffing resources for adequate enforcement and administration.
Well, thank you, because I think that's going to be part of our budget discussion, too. And I know Joseph has done a great job handling all of this along the way. So we'll look forward to what your recommendation is.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Swalison?
Well, I just wanted to thank you, Tim, and thank you, Commissioner Storley, for all the hard work. I think it's a great example of where we did bring in, you know, took the time to bring in the right people to have the discussions. I was really grateful for the information that was coming out from that to set clear some of the, there was perceptions in the, out in the community about these short-term vacation rentals, the effects they were having versus the second homes and this type of thing, which I think those numbers really bore out and educated myself and others out there. And really, I believe, kind of brought down the overall, you know, temperature of the, of the issue. However, the problem still remains. And so I've still had conversations with constituents on this. And they're like, well, if this isn't the answer, then what's the answer? Well, I still point towards our HRA and the efforts that are ongoing with that, towards the housing development here, and even the private entities that, the group that's come together to try to build and answer some of those questions. So there are efforts that are ongoing. I want people to know that. But, but just simply going towards, as you say, a moratorium, it'd be more harmful and confusing, I think, than beneficial to the community right now for the numbers and how we see them. But I really want to thank you for all the hard work that went into this and the public engagement. And I think that is why you didn't have an outpouring, because your communications along the way have been helpful in education. So thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, I just want to echo Commissioner Swalison because I am shocked I did not receive a single phone call about this issue. And before, I was receiving comments all the time at the grocery store, the post office, wherever I went. So I do think it speaks to the fact that it was an open process. I certainly was one that was skeptical at the beginning, maybe, but I'm happy to be proven wrong. So thank you for your work. I do have one question, though, because Article 3.0, the annual license required, and there was change to notify all of the licensed applicants, 3.5, that your office is going to notify all these people that they need to renew their license. But that wasn't happening before. And I'm wondering, did you find that people weren't renewing? Is that why you want to send them something, just remind them?
Commissioner Hawkins and Madam Chair, that's, that is a good question, too. And yes, actually, notifications have been sent out. That was a part of the, the process and the agreement that we've had with the Host Compliance/Granicus, that, that has and was happening. We just wanted to put that in to kind of more identify the timeframe on that. You know, this, right now, we had kind of gone back and forth in terms of the renewal timeframe because we wanted to line up with the lodging tax component of it and be able to confirm that. But we wanted to, you know, accommodate people who wanted to get that process started right away. So we kind of had settled on December 1st through January 31st as a window. And then now this year, we have to kind of modify that because the ordinance won't even be in effect. And the fee that we're looking at wouldn't be in effect until January 1st. So we're not going to be able to start that renewal process until after the 1st of the year. So that was just, that was just put in there as more of a clarification, not that the fact that it wasn't being done. And yeah, we do, most all of those are renewals of licenses that we have.
And is that notification done through Granicus, or is it through your department?
It's, it's done in collaboration. We provide them the information. They provide actually the information to us. And either, either we address people as new operations if they didn't have a license before, or renewals if they, if they have operated or are operating, and Granicus sends those out. But they, it appears as though it comes from us.
All right. That's what I just wondered, if we were adding an administrative task to somebody in your office, or if it already is being done?
No.
It doesn't require something new. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills?
I also applaud the efforts and, and your intention. Thank you, Commissioner Storley, for, for leading this, this committee. And thank you, Tim. I know it's a very consuming process. And I just want to, and you've already said this, but I just want to emphasize again, the conclusion here on our packet. It is understood that the proposed amendments to the Cook County Vacation Rental Ordinance does not represent the end of the discussion, and that future changes and amendments will need to take place due to the changing dynamics of the vacation rental industry, along with its impacts on the community. I just think that's very important because, just like Commissioner Swalison said, there's still ongoing issues there in housing and this discussion. And as Commissioner Hawkins pointed out, very few calls right now, but we've all certainly had many in the past. And so A, having the open process is wonderful, and B, just getting that data, very helpful in the open process to have a really constructive conversation. So thank you all around.
All right. Other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to adopt this new ordinance.
We have a motion. Is there support?
I will support.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And we look forward to working on future policy and ordinances. The work is not finished.
That's exactly correct. And just as an editorial comment, Madam Chair and Commissioners, that the, the zoning ordinance was adopted in, what, 1984? And we still are making tweaks to that and things. You know, you look at, at particular issues that kind of go away and then come back again. Sled dog kennels are one that, you know, occasionally will come up, and we'll have to tweak. It's going to be the same thing with this one, I'm quite certain. So then to move from that into the next step is the approval of the agreement that we have with Granicus/Host Compliance for this. I will say, what we have done, just as kind of a informational sake, is our agreement had been cycled from October through October. And so it was not really lining up with the, with the budget year, the calendar year. And so in this particular one, this agreement, it goes from the October picking up from where this, the current agreement was letting off to go to the end of next year. So actually, this agreement and the cost that's associated in here is a little bit more than what the annual costs are going to be. The other component, there are a couple of components that indicate a little bit of an additional cost. So you have kind of a cafeteria plan in there in the, in the agreement. You would see, if you read through the agreement, the different types of plans that we have. We decided through the committee process, one of the focuses that we wanted to have was on the collection of lodging taxes and making sure that we were going to have a good, solid collection and identification of those. They happened to, you know, in our discussions with Granicus, they happened to have an enhanced or kind of a modified and enhanced web platform for the registration, for licensing that would accommodate for us for the land services component of it. But then they also have an improved lodging tax. In the, in the past, their component for lodging tax really wasn't working out because of the different areas and different groups that we have, the Gunflint Trail and the TTA, and all those different areas or different categories. And now, with this particular enhanced, especially with the combination of the enhanced web portal and the lodging tax portal, they combine together, it works fairly well. And so we decided, in correlation with the Auditor's Office, to go ahead and add that component to it. So this, this cost represents the addition of the component, although I did receive word from, from Brady that the Auditor's Office would be happy to fund that portion of it through the, through the lodging taxes collected. And maybe, I'm putting you on the spot, Brady, but I just wanted to throw that out there. Actually, in looking at the recommendations as we go through, that we'll be talking about in the fee hearing next month, that that increase in the fees will more than sufficiently cover the cost of this, in addition to the staffing resources that we'll be talking about later, not now. But the, this agreement is definitely well, more than covered under that, under that cost. That's, that's going to be even under the current condition. If, for some reason, this board decides not to increase the fees and not to increase staffing and whatever the case may be, and we keep it at 200 and leave everything as it is, still adapt, we still have sufficient funds to be able to cover the cost of this improved agreement. So just open it up for any questions there.
All right. Any questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
So are all vacation rentals will be required to pay online through this website and not just drop off their check with? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, they are required to do it through here. So we prove that they paid it. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we were just, the system just wasn't sophisticated enough for our, you know, diverse system here. We were going to end up with other plans. We were going to end up with two systems. And now it's, it sounds like it'll work. We walked through it with them, so.
That's really good to hear. Other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll, motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve the Granicus Agreement for Services. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners. And the final item on there is a request through the SEA for some supplemental funds or funds through the Recreation Fund to kind of supplement for a grant that had already been approved. I did invite representation from the SEA here, and we have Tim Kennedy here to be able to help and answer questions. But this is, this is one, as you may have read in the report, they did submit an application that were approved in their grant. The bids that they had put out for came in higher than what they had anticipated. There's kind of a timing component. They don't want to lose out on the, on the grant funds that they have available. And certainly, Mr. Kennedy being able to explain this a lot more. Regrettably, we had not had the opportunity to take this in front of the Parks and Trails Commission, so we don't have an official recommendation from them. I did send out an unofficial survey to the members, and I got kind of mixed results. 100% of the committee members do support the SEA, and they do support the projects. The only concern that had been expressed is the fact that we, as a commission, did not have the ability to get together to talk about it. And looking at whatever funds that are, that the county does have to be able to tap into are, are limited, you know, and so if, if we do entertain those, the Parks and Trails Commission members would like to see a formalized kind of set of criteria and protocols for evaluating these types of requests so that they can have these discussions and be able to submit a more formalized recommendation in terms of approval or not, what their recommendation would be. So, but at this point in time, the request is, we don't have time for that. So I can have Mr. Kennedy go ahead and explain what the request is for, and just know, again, reiterating that the Parks and Trails Commission's members did express support for the project, support for the SEA, but just had that concern that they didn't want to formally recommend something that they don't really have a set of, of criteria and protocols for.
All right. Well, thank you, Tim. We appreciate you joining us this morning.
Yes, well, you know, this is an unfortunate situation that the bid on this project came in $27,000 higher than the money that we had estimated than provide, had been provided in the grant. This is a Federal Recreational Trails Program grant that we've received a number of these in the past for various projects doing trail construction or equipment purchases. The grant was for, for $75,000 with a $25,000 match that came from IRRB. But that, that Federal Recreational Trails Program grant also is just one component of multiple grants that we're in the process of receiving. We also have a $400,000 grant from the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission Legacy Program, Parks and Trails Legacy Program, that won't be awarded. We've been recommended for funding, but won't be awarded until after the legislature meets the sit-down session. That grant, that $400,000 grant is dependent on the FRTP grant being utilized as part of the match for, for their, their grant. And so they're intertwined, and makes this much more complex and urgent that we proceed and move this project forward. You know, like I say, it's unfortunate, but we're in this situation that if we're going to, we very well likely could lose one or even two of these grants, which are really important to the work we do. The Superior Cycling Association has raised, you know, in past grants, over $1.2 million to build the trails that we have at Pincushion, Britton Peak, and the connector between Lutz Mountains and Britton Peak. This next round of grants are, looks like we're going to be receiving $700,000. The $100,000 from the FRTP, the $400,000 from the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Legacy Program, and a $200,000 grant from the Legislative Citizens Commission of Minnesota Resources totaling $700,000, which is for work that's scheduled to start, well, this next summer. And that's the reason we went out for bids to, is to make sure we had a contractor to do the work. Contractors, trail contractors are hard to find, and if we delay on, on being able to award this, chances are we won't be able to find a contractor to work next summer. We'll be scheduled back following year, which puts it, puts the project beyond our deadlines for getting the work completed. I mean, it's just really a complex set of steps that, you know, we need to kind of work our way through. And it seemed like the county's Recreation Fund, which is dedicated for recreation expenditures, you know, would be a way for the county to, to step in and help move this project along. The, you know, the Superior Cycling Association has never asked the county for any dollar, dollars to contribute. We've asked for support as being the fiscal agent, but, for our grants. But, but in fact, you know, we've raised, you know, with this, with this next round of funding, over $2 million that has gone to improve our trail resources here in the county. And, you know, I think we do a lot of hard work, and we're just in an unfortunate situation where we need, need some assistance from the county.
Well, thank you. That really is helpful in providing that explanation to us. Are there questions for either Tim?
I have questions for Brady.
Okay.
I'll volunteer if you don't ask.
Go ahead, Brady. Let's hear from Brady.
You're, you're wondering about funding.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we have about 131,000 in our Park and Rec Fund at the moment. This is funded mostly by a portion of our state payment in lieu, about 35, well, exactly 35,000 a year we allocate to this particular fund as laid out in the state in lieu. So a portion of it can go towards Park and Rec, and the rest of it goes just towards levy support. So in the past, you'll wonder, so we've got that much left? And I just did a quick, this is not a detailed survey, but just since 2010, we've spent, just go down the list here, about 42,000 on the Birch Grove Summer Recreation Program. We were funding some of our discretionary funds that were recreation-related through this. Gunflint Hills Golf Course got 20,000 through that. The pool deficit at the city, 320,000. This is all just since 2010, and many of these have ended. The Hovland Town Hall Pavilion and Playground was about 97,000. 26,000 for an ARDC Trail Plan in Sawtooth Bluff, and then Lakeview Park out there at East of Town. About 136,000 for Cook County Community Education Recreation Summer Program, the Incredible Exchange Program over those years, and lease fees on various trails. So that's the bulk of it over that time period. And if you add that up, you'll see that 35,000 a year is not enough. The other thing that will go into this fund on occasion is if we sell tax-forfeited lands, and then a portion of that, if the board decides, they can put 20% of that into Parks and Rec. So we had one sale on the tip of the trail during this time period, so there was a chunk that helped pay for that during this time period. And leave us with the balance.
Well, that's a very helpful history lesson for all of us. Thank you.
There's a lot longer one. Sure.
Since 2010, we'll go with that.
Yeah.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
Okay. I certainly support the trails. All our trails are very important. I do have a problem with this process again, that we don't have a policy for deciding how these funds get spent. And I have a concern, I do want these trails done because I like the trails, okay? But other places when they don't, can't afford, because costs go up, they make reductions in the size of the project. And this is what concerns me, is that a group of people that we have appointed or asked to vet things for us have not had the opportunity to have that discussion in person and make sure that everybody is on the same page saying, you know what, this is priority. That's what we have these committees for, to help us decide how we should vote. And I'll just let you know, didn't get any calls about vacation rentals, but guess what? I got calls about this one on both sides, and it was even, 50/50. So, huh, that concerns me. I have no clue of what your little survey did about, you said it was mixed results, but I struggle with this one because, you know, I like to bike. I also like to go on ATV trails, and there are some serious issues there in our county right now. I just have a problem with this process, the way this is coming before us. So I just needed to say that.
And Commissioner Hawkins, I understand that, you know, looking at not only the Recreation Account Fund, but we're talking about discretionary funding through our Budget Advisory Group, and I think this is something that in general the county, you know, needs to look at, develop a policy, and formalize some criteria. But I do think right now that based on discussions I've had, there is support in the community for this. But again, I think a separate issue is formalizing a criteria, and that would be something that all groups could use who are doing this type of decision-making. So I agree with you, process is needed. Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I'd agree too. I think, I want to thank you for asking for this because it brings to light our need for a policy and a process here. And one of the things, well, a large part of my thinking is what money is on the table and just how appropriate is it for us to leverage $27,000 to get basically $700,000 in our community? And that's pretty huge. I'm frustrated that there isn't a policy, but hey, that's what we'll be working on now, and the Parks and Trails Commission certainly sees the need for that, and I'm certain will be very excited to work on that. It's composed of numerous user groups, as you pointed out, all have pretty significant needs for trails in our community. And in their defense for not being able to meet, there was some scheduling conflicts, and so we had to cancel the last meeting, and here we are now. So it's not that it wouldn't have come before them, just that the stars aligned to bring it to us here first. Puts us in an uncomfortable situation, but again, I just see the benefits. The cons, I see the risk of setting precedent for spending this money towards a user group, but again, I don't see that as a con. I see that as a good use of funds, and I'm hoping as we develop the Parks and Trails Program that we'll have more collaborations with this because what the user groups are telling us is that they need support. They need assistance, whether it's just being a fiscal agent, or whether it's coordination or developing plans and finding funding, because there is money out there as we see here, but it does require effort and planning and money and all that.
And leveraging money.
Yep, yep. That's the biggest, right now for this request is the biggest thing in my mind, is that leveraging. But yeah, we do need, this isn't the only area we need more policy, so. And thank you for sharing what the Parks and Trails comments were because I think that's really helpful. I had some conversations as well, and it was almost exactly the same concerns and support, so.
Other discussion? Questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Oh, Madam Chair, I'll make the motion.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
No support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Oh, again, want to point out where the $27,000 comes from, not the levy. It comes from state dollars, basically, and that brings more comfort to me as well because I bet you the comments you received were about levy dollars going to a user group or maybe not.
Actually, no.
Oh.
But state dollars are taxpayer dollars, remember that. That money comes from somebody's pocket.
It's not trees? Always been tied up with trees, but I'll look into that.
All right. Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll spend it wisely.
We know you will. Thank you. All right. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a request to amend our loan agreement with the EDA. This is started back in 2014 with the golf course project and abatement bond, and in that abatement bonding, there was a loan agreement created between the county and the EDA. And part of that loan agreement is what we're looking at today. The loan agreement anticipated the end completion of the project and then set a couple of dates for after work, which is what you're seeing here. Well, the project didn't complete for a couple of years, and then there was actually another mitigating event with the ice storm that took out the greens for another year. So it's largely been delayed three years, actually, even though the completion technically was two. But the two items in here that our committees and the Board of Governors would like to change to fit reality is the tour of the golf course, which was called to start earlier. Now to move that off to 2022, which in fact did happen this year for the first time. And to change the date in the agreement from August to October to fit the reality, August is too busy on the course to allow a group of people to commandeer golf carts and go tour the course. And the second item is the hiring of an independent golf course consultant, which was anticipated to help with the marketing and a capital improvement plan, et cetera. So since the course hasn't been operating fully during the anticipated timeline, to then also move off the hiring of that consultant now to 2023, which makes a lot of sense. So, and then they help with the capital improvement plan, et cetera. And just some other background, the governing board, which was created by that bond, also at the last meeting discussed starting an improvement process in January in anticipation of hiring the consultant. There are a lot of difficulties in this economy and with golf and et cetera. So we're going to move ahead with that, I anticipate, in January. That was the thought at the last meeting. So you'll be hearing, you should be hearing about that shortly, so.
All right. Attorney Heck, anything you would like to add?
I'll just note that the amendment that's attached to the agenda item is one that I drafted with feedback from EDA representatives, and that the EDA did address this amendment at their most recent meeting. We might have already covered that, but they have approved it. We have a version of this amendment that is already signed by Beth Drost, and that's the one that will pass on to Commissioners to sign should this item be approved.
All right. Are there any questions or remarks for either Brady or Mellon? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, I just want to apologize to Commissioner Hawkins for misunderstanding the situation, and just wanted to ask if the nuances around process and timing have been resolved in your mind, and if there were any other...
Yes, thank you. And I do appreciate, I realize that my concerns, you know, delayed things, but I really think here we go back to process. I really appreciate the fact that the EDA Board had the opportunity to have this in front of them and make their recommendation to us. I believe that's...
I think it helped to educate the EDA Board, and a lot of new members on there, and I think it was very important to have that process.
Right. So I appreciate the extra work I made people do.
Well, and Madam Chair, if I might, I think that work is going to happen regardless, but I appreciate you educating me, so thank you.
All right. Other questions? Commissioner Storley?
Thank you. I hope maybe next year we could all tour the golf course. I think it'd be a good idea to have everybody understand the beauty of it and the nuances of running a golf course with, you know, trying to help the manager understand that we're interested and it's an important part of Cook County, so hopefully we can do that, probably in October.
It's important that that golf course succeeds in Cook County. Yes.
Right.
Any other questions or remarks?
Madam Chair, if I could?
Certainly Administrator Yorki.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be happy, I'll put a reminder on my calendar to set that tour for October of next year so that we can do that. I think that'd be a really good idea.
Excellent. Thanks for doing that. Other questions or comments?
Thought it'd be hot dogs?
Hey, they have new restaurants out there.
Bring your own bag lunch.
And you really have to see it to understand what a treasure it is. The views on that course are spectacular.
Well, and one of the interesting things is last year they started serving food over the winter, so starting on Thursdays through Sunday, and a big screen TV to watch sports or whatever, and a good burger, and it's a fun place to meet also.
Yeah, I've been hearing feedback about that from community members, just as a destination to go watch the game or whatever. Great.
Given our discussion, are we ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the amendment to the loan agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. On to MCIT voting delegates.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is an annual event for MCIT, it's at your AMC meeting, and the county has delegates, voting members to that meeting. And right now, what they have for us is our delegate is Ginny Storley, and the alternate is Robert Swalison, and they need to know if those will be our delegates and alternate, or if you'd like to make any changes.
Well, I actually had a conversation with Commissioner Hawkins, and Commissioner Swalison is aware of this, thinking forward to our December meeting, and wondered, since he is not attending that December meeting, if it might be appropriate to have another commissioner. Commissioner Hawkins, maybe you can share our discussion.
Yeah, you just asked if I'd be willing to be an alternate, and I said I would have. Maybe Commissioner Mills, who didn't want to be.
I'm happy for you to be alternate.
I will definitely be alternate if that's requested.
All right. I think that would absolutely be wonderful. We do need to have a motion for this.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to have Commissioner Storley as our delegate and Commissioner Hawkins as our alternate for the MCIT annual meeting.
Thank you so much.
I support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We appreciate that. All right, Administrator Yorki.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize. I hope I'm coming through it clearly, but obviously my voice is not in the best shape this morning, so I'll do the best I can.
Thank you.
So the item 7A is a request for a letter of support from North Shore Waste, which has approached the IRRB with a request for $500,000 in funding for its planned transfer station upgrades. And I'm not going to go through the items bulleted in the letter, but there are a number of benefits that would come along from the construction of this transfer station. And so we've been asked to provide a letter of support for their request to the IRRB. And so that is the request of action this morning.
And just to add to that, the EDA did agree to move that application of theirs forward, so there's support with the EDA as well as, we hope, with our county commissioners. Any questions for Administrator Yorki? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll motion to approve the letter of support for the North Shore Waste.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Swalison. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I learned a new word in here. Cook Cautians.
Yes.
We're Cautians. We're Cautians.
I love it, I love it. All right, we have a motion and support. Anything else? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, onto Administrator updates.
All right. Just a, a couple of things today. One is that we did, uh, have about a week and a half ago, a meeting with, uh, all staff to, to share the results of the, um, the compensation study, and to talk about potential levy impacts. Um, a couple of things that came out of that were that, um, staff was interested in seeing some additional analysis of, um, proposals to increase the, um, the wage increases beyond 90% of our comparables, which is, uh, what the, what the consultants, uh, used as a starting point for the discussion. And so, I've begun, uh, calculating the levy impacts of those higher levels of compensation. Those will be shared with the, with the working group, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll get information out to all staff before the working group makes its recommendation to this board regarding a potential implementation, uh, plan for, for the, uh, wage increases. So, more, excuse me. So, more, more to come on that. Um, and then the other big thing, of course, is the capital improvement plan, open house meetings, which we're hosting on Thursday, December, uh, 1st. Those will be at, from 10:00 AM to noon, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM in the afternoon, and then an evening session from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And we are asking members of the public who are interested in joining us for those, please, please do come. Uh, we ask that you RSVP, uh, to, to my office, so that we can make sure we have a head count before, um, before those meetings take place, and also to make sure that we don't exceed the room capacity, which is 40 people. So, that, that'll be at the courthouse again December 1st. Um, and I've been working with our consultants, our BPS, to put together informational materials that we'll be using, uh, in those, in those sessions. Uh, the way it will be set up is, we'll have a, a presentation at the beginning of each two-hour block of time, and then we'll have four different stations set up, um, where we'll have more in-depth conversations with the people attending the open house, um, to, to share additional information, to ask questions of them, and to, to get their feedback. And ultimately, the goal is, uh, to use their feedback in the development of the CIP. And, and so, we would plan to have another meeting in the first quarter of next year to, um, basically share the, the feedback that we got, and to inform the public how we're using that feedback to develop the CIP. And I think I'm just going to stop there, and if there are questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Administrator Yorki? It appears not. Well, thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, that's, those are the biggies.
All right, great. Well, thank you much. So now, we'll move on to Commissioner Reports and Meeting Updates. Commissioner Starly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, I attended the Eurohead, um, Commission, excuse me, and, um, we had a long discussion about the results of the election. There'll be big changes with I triple RB, uh, Mark Phillips is, um, retiring. Among the commissioners, um, there's very few older commissioners returning, and, um, so that will be a whole new dynamic. That will be meeting both with all the committees and boards that we go to. I guess, after the first of the year, there'll probably be some changes with ARDC. I'm awaiting some word on that, so, um, be prepared for different dynamics with the new boards.
Thank you so much. Other commissioners? Commissioner Mills?
Um, there's a reconvening of the Cannabis Committee, um, because, uh, it appears that that's one of the top three priorities of, of, uh, the legislature in the upcoming session, and, um, unfortunately, I have a conflict on that day. I reached out to see if, um, could, uh, have an alternate, and I talked with Commissioner Hawkins about that. We'll see what they say. It was a very, um, it was a very exclusive group originally, I think, uh, because it was very sensitive at the time. I don't know where that, the sensitivity is these days, um, so I'm, I'm hoping they're more open to talking more about it. But, as I said before, the platform is not changing, um, it's just, uh, maybe, um, navigating the legislature, where, where, where we see that discussion going, so, and, uh, yeah, I guess that was it.
All right. Anything else? I would like to bring up that in about a month and a half, we will be having our organizational meeting for 2023, and so there's some important things all of us as commissioners need to do to prepare for that. If you recall, two years ago, we talked about more equitably dividing up committee work and that type of thing, and so we want to analyze, um, what is the work that we're currently doing? April Zimmer has, um, a, a list of all the committees that we are on, and she's going to send that to us, and what I'd like each of us to do is spend some time looking at that, and updating when the meetings occur, to make sure that we have the correct dates, because as we found out with Zoom, a lot of date changes and, and whatever occurred. We also know that some groups aren't meeting, that needs to be noted. We also need to be aware that some committees have been added, um, since that list was developed two years ago, and so there are people serving in additional capacities. But if, um, we could all please update that information, so that, um, prior to January, we can kind of look at how things are balanced between all the commissioners, and once again have that discussion. Also, I, um, visited with Attorney Hicken about updating the Commissioner Handbook, and we're going to try to add a sample page of how you complete some of the paperwork for new commissioners, and maybe a frequently asked questions page, um, to help new commissioners as they join with our group. I think we learned a lot, again, by, um, many of us coming on board during COVID, and there was, there was no onboarding in person, and so a lot of things didn't happen. And so, we want to make sure we, in print, address some of those things, so that we better prepare our incoming commissioners. Any other ideas or suggestions that anyone has? Attorney Hicken?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for starting that conversation about the Commissioner Handbook. Um, I ju, I would just invite commissioners to, uh, send me any of your ideas for additions to that, uh, notebook, um, and especially if you have, uh, a couple of frequently asked questions that maybe you, um, had when you began as a commissioner, or that you can imagine a new commissioner having, uh, we can add those to the list and give some short answers, um, at the, at the front of the notebook, so.
All right.
Also, if you can turn in your old notebooks, then I will, um, update the information inside them where necessary.
All right.
James can go.
Go ahead.
Yes, um, I, I just wanted to offer, um, in my previous county, uh, job, I, we had, when the new commissioners came on board, we did have departmental orientations for them, um, and I think it would be useful, now that we are not entirely past COVID, but in a better position to have, uh, in-person meetings, and also, now that I've been on the job a little bit longer, um, I, I would, uh, encourage that we, that we have, uh, meetings for, uh, and we only have one new commissioner this time, but I think it'd be good to, to sit down with her and our department head, so that each department head can provide an overview, uh, of the work that the department does, and maybe highlights some key initiatives that they're currently working on.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. Thank you for that. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as far as the Commissioner Handbook is concerned, one of the challenges and, um, a lot of questions I had early on were about the expense report, um, just the logistics of that, and, and, um, and what's needed, how it works, what's covered, what's not, all that kind of stuff. And that was just something that came, came to mind. I also wanted to thank you for, um, starting the conversation about our committees and, and updating that. I would like to, um, encourage all of us to think about, um, if there are other committees that we think a commissioner should be attending regularly, to bring those ideas forward, because there are, there are areas, I think, um, that we can, um, uh, you know, represent the county and be part of the conversation more fully in our community that, that are very valuable, so. One thought I had right out of the gate, what I'm mainly thinking of is city council meetings, and I know they're online, and we can watch those, but it's a whole different deal if you're there and able to, um, give feedback, or, or have a back and forth if there's any questions there. I know it's important to, uh, stay in our lane, um, but there is plenty of collaboration that we already do, and that I see in the future as well, so I think those, that's an important area. Yeah. I feel, even though I can watch those meetings, I still feel out of the loop oftentimes. So, that's why I was thinking it might be good to have a commissioner there. And, and vice versa.
And I would like to confirm the date, so we're looking at the first Tuesday of January, which is the 3rd.
Correct. Right. And if you can get things turned in prior to that, just so we have an opportunity to assemble everything and can, um, kind of provide some focus to our discussion, that would be helpful. Maybe before winter break, if you could get that in. Anything else from commissioners? Well, if not, we have some meetings to note. We have Truth and Taxation coming up on November 29th, here at 6:00 PM, and as Administrator Yorki mentioned, our CIP open house meetings at 10:02 and 6:00 PM on Thursday, December 1st. A question, given, um, the number that, you know, the capacity of the room, 40, should we consider maybe only having one commissioner at each meeting, or, um, maybe Administrator Yorki, if you wanted to notify us, because we kind of really have two people scheduled for each of those time periods, um, if we hit 40, then notify us and one person can step out? What would you like to do?
I think it'd be better, actually, I, I, I wouldn't be including the commissioners in that head count.
Okay.
Because I think it's important that as many of you be present for these meetings as possible, um, so, don't, don't worry about that. Um, if we've got two commissioners, uh, at a session, that, that should be fine.
Okay. So, let's just review for our records, um, for the, um, 6:00 PM meeting. We had?
Me.
Commissioner Mills? And Commissioner Hawkins? 2 o'clock, we had me and Commissioner Starly.
Oh, I thought you were 10. Then I was 10.
All right. All right. All right, and then Commissioner Swalison?
I was 10.
10? All right. All right, we have it. All right, we are all covered then. Great. And then we have our AMC Annual Conference, December 4th through 7th, and, uh, we are looking forward to that. Lots of good information, lots of learning, great for new commissioners. We hope that, um, Commissioner-elect White will be joining us. And then we have our Correspondence, the Sales Tax Report, which is information only. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison. A motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously.